Thank you, Madam Chair. From the top.
Well, if you ever believed in deja vu, tonight is the night. Um, I think. Let's make sure we have our, um, Chair Baca.
Yes, I'm here.
Great, okay. Once again, from the top, I call this May 23rd, 2023 High-Bread Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. Chair Baca is remote, um, and may have to jump off a little early, but we're glad to have her here. Um, again, I want to publicly say and send out to, um, Don Schrader, who was in, hit by a car and is in the hospital, um, sending out, um, our thoughts for his speedy recovery. We miss you here, Mr. Don Schrader. We will have a moment of silence, um, that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Madam Clerk Stover. Thank you all. Um, Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, there are no changes or additions to the agenda.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any changes?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Yeah, I'd like to call for a deferral of Item 8C. It is a Joint Air Quality Control Board at-large, uh, appointment, uh, because there's an opening. And I, since, you know, a lot of development and, and a lot of the stuff that, uh, Burnley County deals with is in, is in my unincorporated district, uh, we would like to ask to at least have, uh, a candidate, uh, be, uh, presented in front of this commission to, uh, at least, uh, have a vote, uh, and a consideration to this position. So I would ask for a deferral to the next meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada. Thank you, Commissioner Benson, for seconding. Um, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Barboia?
No.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
No.
Chair Barboia?
You called when you were ready, sorry.
I mean, Baca, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I still didn't hear. Is she texting or?
I think she was on when I started. Chair Baca, can you hear us?
She is no longer on the Zoom.
So it fails.
Okay. Um, okay. Be, any other changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Olivas.
Uh, I would like to move a deferral on Item 9B, a motion that myself and Madam Chair Baca are sponsoring to our first meeting in June.
I'll second that. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Chair Baca?
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
I would like to pull Item 8C off the consent agenda and put it on for discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Olivas.
Uh, and I would like to pull Item, uh, 8F and ask that that be added to the agenda for consideration.
I'll second both of those.
Thank you. We were able to pull those off. Any other changes, Commissioners? Great, we'll move on to proclamations, and we have County Manager National Public Works Week.
And here we go.
We love you guys so much.
I don't remember.
And if I may, in this second round, I want to take a picture when you're all up here. Oh, we lost them. Oh, no, here they come. It looks, it's just a really good picture right here with County Manager in the middle and everyone surrounding her.
Okay, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, um, thank you. Uh, I'm, it is my pleasure to, um, to declare, uh, National Public Works Week, uh, May 21st through May 27th of 2023. And this year's theme is Connecting the World Through Public Works. Public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are vital, that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Burnley County. These infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are equipment operators, tradesmen, mechanics, inspectors, lab personnel, engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. It is in the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Burnley County to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. The year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Publics Work, Public Works Association. So we pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national life, health, safety, and our quality of life. So want to thank you all for the amazing work that you do, and I stand proud, I always stand proud, um, just with you all, and you all amaze me, all the work that you do every day. So thank you all, you make the county shine. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the commission. Uh, I stand here today proud with my staff. Uh, we have our directors, um, as well as, uh, some staff here that you normally don't see. Um, like we said, we have our, our facility staff that are always here to make these meetings comfortable and, and make sure they're running smoothly. But we also have a lot of our support staff with us tonight from our Division Support and Technical Services Department, that these are the ones that, they're behind the scenes, the stuff that make, that we make look good in front of you guys, they're helping get that through for us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Awesome.
Madam Chair? I just wanted to say thank you guys, District 4 thanks you, everything that, uh, we call, I don't even remember what I was saying earlier. Thank you, guys. I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Yeah, public works is a big, huge part of, of, of District 2, where the unincorporated area of Burnley County. Uh, and as we move forward and working on the infrastructure, that is probably 300 years behind schedule, uh, and that has nothing to do with your fault, that's just the way it's always been historically, but since I've been a commissioner, you've really stepped up the effort, uh, in really fixing and bringing forth, uh, uh, my district into, uh, in, into the future. Uh, and as we have public meetings on, with, you know, historic neighborhoods and how we're going to move forward, your staff is always there and professional and prepared, and constituents in District 2, um, have always, after meetings, talked about how great, uh, public works is and how Burnley County is. So thank you so much for making me look good as a commissioner, and we celebrate you not only this week, but every single day of the year. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Olivas.
I just wanted to say on behalf of District 5, uh, how much we appreciate you and support you and all the work you do, from our greater operators that just wrapped up, uh, a heavy snow season out there, to our clean team and our engineers that are working on projects that are, that are in the queue. There's just so many important things that, that happen in public works that, that maintain and build up our basic infrastructure, and especially in the, the unincorporated East Mountains areas. It's absolutely key, and we appreciate it, and so many of my constituents do too, so thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, on to item number five, certificates and awards. We have Commissioner Benson with the recognition of DECA students.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, DECA students, would you come to the podium? Okay, everybody in this room, uh, we've got some, uh, local heroes here, uh, that, that stand out. So, um, we've got eight students here. But not all of them could make it tonight. So I'm going to read your names first. Uh, Amy Leinberger. A.J. Rivera. Akansha Nanda. Philippe Kanaka. Catalina Padilla. Kayla Hines. And Peyton Sherwood. Great. So. These students just returned from nationals where there's 22,000 students competing for, for a very few number of awards, and these eight made it to the top 20 of 22,000 students. Never before. Never before has, as far as I know, has that happened in terms of like that kind of a ratio. So. As, uh, an entrepreneur myself and, and with interest in growing the local economy, I'm thrilled that you all are, are making these waves. And, uh, so I, I asked to recognize you publicly. So I've got certificates for each of you, uh, with a, and, and each of you are going to get a, a lapel pin, so that next time you're winning awards, you can represent Burnley County, um, proudly. But, so I've got a certificate for each of you, but I'm going to read it once instead of reading it eight times. Uh, but this, you're welcome, Madam Chair. This certificate of recognition given to you all. DECA, which stands for Distributive Ed- Education Clubs of America, prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in high schools and colleges around the globe for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Of the more than 3,000 New Mexico DECA members from across the state, seven students from Burnley County qualified for finals at the International Career Development Conference, the top level of competition for DECA students. Nearly 60 competitions involve written exams or reports and an interna- interactive component with an industry professional serving as a judge. With more than 22,000 students from across the world attending ICDC this year in Orlando, Florida, it is a huge accomplishment to make the top 20 and walk the stage at the annual conference. Participating in extracurricular activities requires time and dedication on top of other daily responsibilities students have. Thank you for demonstrating hard work and being an example for others to follow, presented this day of May 23rd, 2023, signed by all of the Board of Commissioners. Thank you so much, and I'm, I'm so proud of you, and I just want to say, keep doing it, create businesses, and keep them here. Stay here. Don't export your talent, don't move out of state and start businesses, they don't need you, we do. All right? So, stay here, and then we'll be recognizing you for future awards. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, and you, it looks like your coach is here. I don't know if you want to, uh, make any, uh, statements? Please feel free, anybody.
Yeah, I need all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson, uh, Madam Vice Chair and to the board for recognizing our achievements. It's definitely been a journey, and we're really happy to be here, so thank you.
Thank you.
And, and the coaches and teachers that have helped, um, i- it's a, it's a huge endeavor, so thank you, uh, also for being here. Um, the kids couldn't do it without you, and they need leadership and guidance as well, and so, um, uh, and then it looks like you just kind of had to point them in the right direction, and they just, uh, took off. So thank you so much. Okay, come up, we got certificates and then, uh, photo.
I just want to say one more thing.
Yes.
Yeah, a, a huge shout out, because, um, so our school is basically, um, this, we're the fir-, we're a first-year chapter, so we're really new to DECA, and none of this would have been possible without Ms. Falmberg. Yeah. Very much a shout out, so, thank you.
And I wanted to say a quick note, just that I noticed that all of you are women, and I don't know if the three that are missing aren't, but I just, oftentimes, oftentimes women are, are when you're, when we're girls, told to be small, or don't take up too much space, or be quiet or cautious, and I, I'm glad that my daddy taught me that clothes mouths don't get fed, and we just have to go for our goals and reach them, and obviously you're doing that, so thank you, I just wanted to make a note, um, acknowledge your bravery and courage, so thank you.
Thank you.
Let me do this, and then we can all get one. Okay. Let's get you centered, right there. There you go. Okay, one, two, three. Okay, next. Who's going to be there?
Got it. Thank you. Thank you so much.
What great brilliance to kick us off today. Thank you. Thank you for coming to our meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Benson, for bringing these brilliant students in front of us. Um, so we'll go to public comment, but before we hear public comment, we will hear Item 5. Oh, we already did that, sorry. Um, community services. DC, uh, okay, public comments.
So we're going to have the presentation from the Extension Service, then we'll go into public comment.
Okay, thank you. Burnley County Extension, I do have that on my agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and fellow commissioners. It's great to be here this evening. My name is John Garish. I am the Program Director at the Extension Office, and we have a few updates for you, and continuing our great programming, we'll be hiring two people coming onboard. June 1st is going to start our new Family Consumer Science, uh, home ec agent, who's going to be teaching all of our food preservation classes and also be on hand to help all of our food entrepreneurs here for the county with, uh, food safety, health safety, and education classes. We, um, July 1st will be our Horticulture Agent. Uh, he's a recent grad from New Mexico State University, and he's going to help out with our master gardeners and all of the garden questions that we get here. And with that, uh, April and May, we've already had over 400 calls to the office for plants and insects and everything, so, uh, that new hire will be greatly on hand quickly. Um, we're just finishing up our in-school with the Ag to Chick. I know we've been to at least 15 or 20 different schools and lots of classrooms. Um, and then with that, our 4H Fair is going to be the end of July, July 22nd through 29th, and so the schedule is in front of you. We'd love to have any of you out there at any time. And then our Kitchen Creations and Diabetes Education, we are, uh, having both summer and fall classes on, uh, uh, ongoing. Our first one starts tomorrow evening, uh, for diabetes education. That'll be a five-week series, and then we'll be repeating that later on. Um, and then our food preservation classes will be July and August, um, every week, uh, throughout then, and $20 each, so please visit our website for those classes and to get registered for any of those. And for my own work, I've been doing some winter ag business classes, had about 20 people participate in that, from learning how to write a business plan to doing farm taxes and registering their business. I've been doing on-farm food safety and helping small farms to get their produce into the schools, senior centers, as well as into early childhood. Um, and then ongoing workshops all the time, and we just finished up a two-day sustainable ag workshop, uh, at Los Ranchos, had a great crowd, and I'm always ongoing, helping to support the Burnley County Grow the Growers program, um, Los Ranchos Ag Nature, AgraFutures for their work, as well as the Rio Grande Community Farm. And tonight, I'd like to introduce Nisa Patterson. She is one of our pr- program support staff who works with all of our school garden efforts. Nisa?
Hi, you can tell I'm the school garden lady by how I dress. I'm Nisa. Um, so my job, I work part-time, my job is support, that, support the school gardens in the county. We have about, uh, anywhere between 80 and 90 school gardens, which is really excellent. And I'd like to point out, um, that one of my, my jobs is to really help prepare our future, you know, our young people to get excited about agriculture, and also help them begin learning skills about how to grow in the Southwest. And so I support teachers who are working, I support the teachers who are working with the kids in the gardens. Um, and so, uh, you know, we only get nine inches of rain a year, and the national average is 40, so everybody needs to learn, young people really need to learn how to work with that, as, uh, if they're going to work in agriculture. So I support teachers and school staff. I collaborate, APS has a school garden position, and I collaborate with that position, we work a lot together. Um, and then we provide free seeds as all of all, as, as well as access to our horticulturists and any, any other Extension Service support that the school gardens might need. We're trying to make it easy to do a school garden in our county by supporting them. And the last thing I want to say is that, um, oh, yeah, is that we have, um, a lot of school gardens who are still actually getting up and going after COVID. It just is taking a while to get back to it, and we're about, so in order to get that really en- energized, we're about to have a school garden conference, and that's between us and, and APS, and about 60 teachers are going to come and learn, we're going to tour school gardens, and we're going to learn a lot more about how to get these school gardens going, because some of them kind of slumped during COVID. And what I see in the future is that as we're talking more about getting more food to kids with the state initiatives, I see us thinking more and more about how are we going to get garden food for kids to snack on in the schools, you know, we're trying to get more food in the schools, right? We want kids to be well-fed in the schools. Well, one aspect of that can be getting the garden food that's in there in the school to the kids. Peas, anybody, after school? You know, healthy snacks and things like that. So I'm really excited about the future of using the school gardens to supplement kids' healthy eating in schools. Thank you very much. Thank you for your support.
Are there any questions from the commissioners?
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, uh, I've recently, in the last three, four years, started a garden and have been growing, and I just want to really talk about, you know, um, I think the behavioral health uh, aspect of, of, of growing food. Um, you don't have to ha-, I just built a couple of grow boxes. Um, I, I used my campaign signs and reused them and turned them into grow boxes. Uh, I thought that would be the best use of, of that lumber, uh, better than actually running for office. And, uh, and so, uh, I think people don't really understand what it does for you mentally, I think, on top of the healthy food. Uh, I hadn't really tasted a tomato till I grew my own, to be honest with you. I don't know what they're selling at the stores, but those aren't tomatoes. Uh, until you grow your own food, you don't really appreciate the taste of food. So, uh, I think that your programs at APS, and I've supported them back when I was an APS School Board member, because, and I wasn't even growing food then, uh, but I support them just because I think it has other, uh, healing properties, uh, to it. So thank you for sticking with APS and sticking with the community and supporting Grow the Growers, which is a big, huge thing in, in my district, and I know they need you, and how we use water is very important, right? It's a very import-, uh, people don't like me to talk about that, but I'm glad you mentioned that, because how we use water is very, very important in the climate to what we're at and where we live. So thank you for the work. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada. Any other questions?
Yes, Commissioner Olivas.
I, I think you're going to get off easy on questions, uh, but I wanted to thank you for, for being here, and thank you for inviting all of us. I was able to attend your, your annual, um, uh, annual report delivery, where, you know, I know you went into much more depth on all of these areas and then some. And, uh, it's exciting, as a, as a lifelong gardener, as a graduate, so to speak, of the Grow the Growers program a few years back, uh, it's just exciting to see the work you're doing on everything from nutrition to, uh, home agriculture to school-based agriculture. I think there's a lot of great programs, um, you know, one of them that, that was highlighted there was in my district, at Collet Park Elementary. Some of the exciting stuff they're doing there and, and the real results they're seeing in, in test scores and student achievement and student attendance, kids wanting to come to school because they have something else that they're interested in. So this is just really important, and I'm really proud that, that Burnley County is a supporter of this, and, uh, thank you for being here, and thank you for the great work that everybody on your staff does.
Thank you, Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, and I just wanted to add, it might come from a family of growers, but I also live in the Southeast, which is the most dense populated, and I think a lot of our, my district don't get to experience growing or nature in the same way that folks that live in the unincorporated areas. And I actually, just to comment, you, I, folks have heard the Walmart in my district off of Sametales closed and left that community, um, and so one of the si-, one of the many suggestions that, um, that many of the, of my constituents have had is, can we expand Grow the Growers as a food resource in that food desert? So thank you for the work you're doing, it's recognized and want, people want more of it, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you, commissioners.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner, Chair Baca.
Thank you. I'm sorry that I got, um, somehow kicked off the meeting, but I am back.
Thank you, we're glad.
Before we move, yeah, thank you. I'm not sure if there are any more questions for the Extension Service, but I had a comment before we moved to, uh, public comment.
There are no more, and yes, please.
Okay. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'd like to move up the air quality appointment to be heard before we move forward on the agenda. Um, I, I didn't tell everyone this, but I have a, a badly injured shoulder, and that is why I am not present, and I'm going to need to go off the meeting early. I feel very strongly that we can move this up. Um, Ms. Kitty Richards is the proposed appointee. She currently sits on the board. The chair of that board is very much in favor of her continuing in that capacity, and I want to move that forward, um, in this meeting, if, if we can do that, please.
Madam Chair, second?
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Uh, Vice Chair Barboia?
Madam Chair, may I ask a clarifying point?
Yes.
Where in the agenda would we move it?
I, um.
Madam Chair?
Perhaps Julia?
My apologies, um, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair. So the item was originally under consent, it was moved down to 10B, so it'll be heard, um, up at the top of the minutes before public comment.
Thank you.
So 6B.
6B.
6B, okay.
I'm sorry, it was moved.
Thank you for that clarifying question.
It was moved to 10?
No, 6.
But originally it was moved to what?
10.
10B.
10B, okay. So then are we moving all of 10 up to 6, or just this one item?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Olivas.
Uh, I believe the request I seconded was for immediate consideration of, uh, what previously was Item 8C. So the consideration.
It was on consent.
We'll call vote.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
I would like, actually, can you just clarify? So we moved it to 10B, now it's moving up to 6A? Or 6B?
6B.
We pulled it off the consent agenda originally.
Right.
Would have moved it automatically to 10B, and now Chair Baca is asking to have it moved up to 6B.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So only this item, not the, all of 10? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
No.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Chair Baca?
Yes.
So called.
Okay, so now we're going to do it before public comment. That's 6B. Okay. Thank you, we will move on to now Item 6B, um, the appointment that was on the con- originally on the consent agenda.
Move approval of the appointment of Kitty Richards to the Air Quality Control Board?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Uh, Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
No.
Commissioner Benson?
No, I would like to defer.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Uh, Chair Baca? Chair Baca?
Yes.
So called.
Thank you. You have that vote. Chair Baca?
Thank you very much.
We will move to public comment. For folks that will be giving public comment, you have two minutes to share your comments. You'll then be notified when your time is up. Julie Anne, how many people do we have to speak to sign up? And please call the first name.
Madam Chair, we have three signed up this evening. When I call your name, if you can make your way up to the podium and state your name for the record before you state your comments, starting off with Ramona Goolsbee, followed by John Veltre, followed by Christopher Meach.
Hello, Ms. Goolsbee. Good evening, Vice Chair Barboah, Chair Baca, and Commissioners. My name is Ramona Goolsbee, and I'm here tonight to talk about the referendum project. In December, a group of about twenty grassroots people from all over the state met via Zoom to discuss the probability of doing a referendum based on the extreme laws being proposed even before the legislative session began. This group met weekly for several months, monitoring the session, going to the legislative hearings and testifying, sending emails and calling legislators, trying to promote compromise and cohesiveness. Many of the bills that were of significant concern were amended and stopped, but unfortunately, there were some that made it through. The referendum project that started as a grassroots efforts continues today. There are currently five lawsuits in four different district courts against the Secretary of State's proclamation that HB four, HB seven, HB two oh seven, SB thirteen, SB two oh seven, and SB three ninety-seven were designated as laws for the preservation of public peace, health, and safety, when, in fact, that designation is only legislative purview, and they did not. People from all over the state have not been deterred by the unconstitutional actions of the Secretary of State and are currently collecting signatures on petitions against these laws. You can find events here in Burnley County and more information by going to the bettertogethernewmexico.org or nmbabills.com. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you so much for your time.
I was hoping to get her fourteen seconds. Good evening, Commissioners. It's good to see you all. John Veltre, nonpartisan New Mexico resident, chairman for the New Mexico Election Transparency Network. And our mission, of course, is to unify New Mexico through communication, education, and action promoting solutions for New Mexico's election systems. Our goal is real simple: secure and transparent elections. Since going from a private, nonprofit, faith-based, nonpartisan domain to a public domain a few months ago, we have expanded from the surrounding Albuquerque areas to all thirty-three counties in New Mexico and coast-to-coast nationwide. One of our cornerstones for our organization is the U.S. as well as the New Mexico State Constitution. What could be more transparent than these two books right here? On behalf of the New Mexico Election Transparency Team, as a gift, I have purchased these for each of you, and these are the latest, newest New Mexico and U.S. constitutions. Here's a copy for each of you, and if somebody would make sure that one gets to our chair, who is unfortunately not here tonight, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you. I have forty-nine seconds left.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I can't accept something that he bought as a commissioner? I can't accept a gift?
We're a nonprofit, and this was a nonprofit gift.
I'll get a copy, but thank you. I just don't accept gifts. I'm very transparent.
I understand.
And it's about my ethics, and so.
No worries, Stephen.
But I did listen to you, and I will get a copy.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll leave these with Julie Anne. You can do what you want with them.
Thank you.
They are a gift from us. We're a nonprofit, like I said, and these are the latest, the newest, and I bought a hundred of these. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Meach. I am before you today, and it's unfortunate that Commissioner Baca strategically moved the item eight C before I was able to get up here and address the Commissioners. But I was going to respectively request your reconsideration of Kitty Richards' reappointment to the Air Quality Control Board. I believe an opportunity exists to bring fresh perspectives and expertise to the board, and I offer myself as an alternative candidate. With a diverse educational background in both business administration and environmental sciences, I bring a unique blend of knowledge to address the complex intersection of environmental concerns and economic interests. As Vice President of CNE Concrete, I have successfully managed operations ensuring compliance with environmental regulations, fostering a culture of innovation and sustainability. In collaboration with the Los Alamos National Laboratories, I am actively involved in groundbreaking research projects on sustainable cement and concrete technologies. These initiatives aim to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, transform plastic waste and construction materials, and enhancing the strength and durability of concrete. By nominating me, you would have selected a candidate that not only understands environmental responsibility, but actively contributes to research and development. I have honored, or excuse me, I have honed my leadership and communication skills through engagements with organizations like Vistage Worldwide, Leadership New Mexico, New Mexico ReadyMex Concrete, and Aggregate Association, enabling me to bridge gaps and foster collaboration between divisive stakeholders. I am committed to cultivating an environment of open dialogue and finding innovative solutions that harmonize economic growth and the protection of our air quality and environment. There's more, and you have my application. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Yeah, can I ask you a couple of questions since you're up there? So what motivated you to want to serve on the Air Quality Control Board? Is it based on the new stuff that's moving forward?
It definitely involves that. So we've got operations both in Grants, Gallup, and Farmington, a third-generation, family-owned and operated business. We have permits under the New Mexico Air Quality Board, nothing under the Burnley County or Albuquerque, the city of Albuquerque, so there would have been no conflict of interest. I believe that Burnley County and the city of Albuquerque is a springboard for what's rolled out statewide, and if I can be involved and participate and corroborate and bring the industry into the same room that a lot of these rules and restrictions that are being applied without the understanding of what is actually taking place out in the field would have been instrumental.
And I just want to just follow up with that statement. You know, as you, I don't know if you know much about me, but I really fight for, you know, the Mountain View area. We have a lot of those plants that are in there. So one of my stances is really to limit that kind of development within that area, right? Because it's kind of saturated. But how do you think that these new things that are coming forward are just, are going to impact economic growth through Burnley County and the state of New Mexico?
It's going to economically impact Burnley County, the city of Albuquerque. It will.
Yeah.
There are multiple discussions within our industry of, is it worth continually to invest the capital investment to do what is needed here in the state of New Mexico versus surrounding states?
So I believe that negotiation and us coming up with the compromises is definitely the way to go. That's what government is. That's what, you know, that's what we're supposed to be doing as leaders, is advocating for compromise and moving forward. And so I just want to personally thank you for standing up for that because it's not happening anymore. That, we're in a divisive place now, and it's very unfortunate, but I'm just here to tell you, don't quit. Keep fighting because jobs and economic growth for a state like New Mexico is key to our success. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And I believe so, as a family-owned and operated business, I want to continue with that generational business. So, yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Benson?
Mr. Meach, thank you for getting up here to speak. You, the vote was already cast, and you could have just left. So thank you for coming up here to speak, and I'm aware of the business environment. I want to create jobs. That's my, so I was asking these kids to do. And so if you're not going to do it on this board, then get creative and figure out other ways to do it here in Albuquerque, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you. We move to item seven, approval of minutes. I moved, approved the main ninth, 2023 Administrative Meeting Minutes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Oh, please call the roll.
Madam Chair, now that Chair Baca is no longer online, then you can call it.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Julian, Madam Chair?
My apologies. Okay, go ahead.
Great, I'm glad you're still on, Commissioner.
I'm still on for a little bit. Thank you, then.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Barboah?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Aye.
Chair Baca?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, item eight, approval of consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please provide resolution numbers for items eight G, I, and ordinance number for eight J.
Yes, ma'am. Eight G is AR 2023-58. Eight I is AR 2023-59. And J is ordinance 2023-12.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The consent agenda has been published and made available to the public. Therefore, I move to approve the consent agenda. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Barboah?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Chair Baca?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Benson.
I'd like to make a point of personal preference. The item H, North Valley Aquatic Center Construction, I just want to call it out. It's a, it's a big deal. It's full circle for the North Valley. When I was in high school, my brother-in-law was a lifeguard there. It was a full swimming pool, and then it went away. When I was raising children there, or when I was raising small kids, we would take our kids there, but it was only a spray park. Big difference. We couldn't utilize it very much, and so we were just one member of the community. It just wasn't being used very much. So we've got a full swimming pool, which will be multi-generational, and is badly needed in the North Valley. There's not a whole lot of opportunities like that. So just want to thank everybody for supporting this, and I look forward to seeing the final project. Thank you.
Thank you. Exciting. I love the swimming pools in our community. So moving on to items nine, Madam Clerk, please provide resolution numbers.
Nine A is AR 2023-60. Nine C is AR 2023-61.
Great. And we have County Assessor's Office to Office of Certification Project, Assessor Lada here to present. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. We are bringing forth this resolution as a result of the legislation that was updated during the most recent legislative session. The resolution provides for county assessors and employees of the county assessors to receive appraisal certificates based on the credentials ever increasing certification. The law was first passed in 1969 for the county assessors, and in its wisdom, the legislature expanded that to employees of the county assessors' office in 1977. For the county assessors, these rates have not increased since 1969. The legislature did increase those in the past session, and so we're asking for your approval to have these certifications updated to the amounts allowed by the state legislature. This is not only a recruitment tool for competent appraisers that do the work in the assessor's office and the staff. We compete with fee appraisers when you sell a house or when a business needs to go over financing. That's what is essentially being done by the staff of the county assessors' office. But it is also a retention tool to ensure that competent staff, well-qualified staff with the experience remains in the county assessors' office. As I testified before this commission in February, when I came in in January, we had a vacancy rate of about thirty-eight percent. While we are budgeted for one hundred and forty employees, when I took office, we only had eighty-nine employees. It is very difficult to do all of the statutory work with competent staff, but when we're down fifty employees, it's even more difficult. This is part of our budget that will be presented later, and we hope that you support it, and we stand for questions, Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson.
Madam Chair, thank you. Not really a question, Mr. Assessor. It's more an observation. Thank you for meeting with me and going over the numbers. I just want to say that really what stood out to me in this request is the Assessor's Department has a lot to do, and it has to get done, and they're not able to do it, which is a disservice to our, to our community, to our taxpayers. And then the bigger thing that I, that I was considering was the cost, the work has to get done whether we have the staff or not. So the assessor has to contract out to private providers to get these services done if we can't do it, which is extremely expensive. We can do it much better internally as long as we have the staff. And so I don't see this as a, well, what I see, what I see this is as an investment in our internal department so that we can do the job that you were hired to do, you were elected to do, and hire the people to do what you would ask them to do and to do it well and professionally and to be able to compete and recruit. And it's a difficult job, and you're doing, you're doing very well with limited resources, and I think this is a smart move to increase these numbers. The increase is actually not much compared to the cost of not having it in place, especially when it has to get contracted out outside. And, Mr. Assessor, I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, but thank you for going over these numbers with me. Appreciate it.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, thank you so much. That is absolutely correct because of attrition and other vacancies, particularly our commercial department basically had eight employees prior to July of 2022. On June, July, August, in August of 2022, we had one commercial appraiser left, and so that obviously put a big strain on the office. We do contract out for fee appraisals at about an average cost of $4,000 per appraisal. We have over eighteen thousand commercial properties that need to be assessed on a yearly basis. If we had a full staff, that means that we would pay each of our commercial appraisers about $35 per assessment of each of those commercial properties compared to the $4,000 that we have to pay for when we contract out. So this is definitely a return on investment, as Commissioner Benson may too, or the personnel of the people that we have here, and it does result in fair and equitable assessments for all property owners.
And ultimately, with less property tax increases, at least that would be my hope. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, that is also my hope.
I really appreciate it, and thank you for the update as well. And I think with this, I really just really appreciate your leadership and thinking out of new ways to address those nuisance properties or get, get us some of that back so we can increase the homeownership across our county. So thank you for your leadership. Move to approve, motion to approve Administrative Resolution AR 2023-60.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Barboah?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Chair Baca?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you, Assessor. We are moving. Thank you. Onto item nine C, appointment of myself, Commissioner Adrian Barboah, to serve as a liaison to the county manager and to provide input and review of behavioral health deputy county manager job description. I move, I so move.
Second.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So I have major concerns with this resolution. I think it really does not fit within the preview of what a county commissioner should do. So I have some questions. I'd like to read some of the ordinance, especially when it comes from the ethics side of being involved in what the county manager and staff are supposed to do as a job. I think this is out of our preview. I think if we go down this road, then we're going to start being able to do this with other different types of departments. Will it start happening in Public Works? Will it start looking at how and what roads are going down, and who gets hired for those types of positions? I think in order for the public to be completely transparent, we should not, definitely not be involved when it comes to hiring such a high-paying position, and it just does not look correct. You know, part of the ordinance really kind of keeps us out of that, and if we do pass this today, I'm going to legally challenge how you could put a resolution. What's a resolution is not law. An ordinance is law. A resolution is a wish. It is not, and it should not be considered as being able to change a law. If you want to change a law, then you got to go back into the ordinance and change that. It, it definitely, through this, through my research, this says the county manager shall be responsible for the efficient administration of all affairs of the county. It is direct of the work. The person who does the hiring and firing of deputy county managers is the county manager. So unless authorized by another section of the code, neither the Board of Commissioners nor its members shall dictate either direct or indirectly the appointment of any person by the county manager, nor prevent him or her from exercising her judgment in the appointment of deputy county manager. I think that, and then also I want to kind of talk about our role when it comes to so here, it reads, "No county commissioner shall make, participate in making in or away attempt to use his or her position to influence any hiring decision or decision regarding employment for any county employee except for the appointees of the county commissioners, the county manager, the county attorney, and the fire chief." So there, there's a section here that says you put a resolution forward, but I think I'm going to legally challenge that because that does not sit well with what we are supposed to do. So that also means that you cannot be involved in either writing the description of a job or how that is supposed to move forward and how we hire this position. This is a hundred and sixty thousand dollar job. And I feel that if you're, if any commissioner is involved in any process of that, you are putting your thumb on the scale, and you are moving this forward. And I think it would read even worse later on that if somebody who was hired that was either an ex-county commissioner or a supporter or a friend looks bad on that commissioner. It is not, this is what keeps us from breaking ethic codes. This is what keeps us clean from that work. We should not be involved in that. We actually, at the end of the day, do get a vote, whether we accept this person for this position or not. But to be in the room reads really bad, and we're setting a really bad precedent for this commission moving forward saying that it's okay, that all we got to do is pass a resolution, and we can be a part of the hiring and firing process. It does not sit well with me. I really true believe that even though you pass a resolution tonight, that is ethically, it is ethically wrong. That is not our job. Our job is to hire and fire certain positions. The county manager is in charge of hiring staff and how that works downward. This looks bad, and I've been getting calls. This is not how we are supposed to be doing the work. We meet with staff, we put in suggestions as we represent our constituents. We do not go in there and use our power at any moment. So now we're passing this resolution tonight. So my question is, did, did, did the, did, did you at any point participate in how the job description goes? Did you write anything about how the qualifications? Were you involved in any of the qualifications? Because if you were, is this retroactive to that work, right? So it would have to be retroactive, saying, I've already been involved, I've already participated in, in, in what the, the perimeters of, of applying for this job are. And even if you're just sitting in the room during the hiring process, that is a position of power, and you're putting your thumb on the scales, and I just don't think we should be doing that. So I am begging this commission not to go down this road, to trust the county manager, to trust the staff who have been working in the behavioral health for many, many years. Seven years as long as I've been here, and they've done really great, successful things, and they've had really great leaders in those departments. I don't think we should be getting involved in that. That is not, and I'll repeat this. That is not our job.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada. Yeah, if I could just respond a little bit. So I actually did work with the county manager and our county attorney on this, and I was from the beginning told that I don't even need, and as we have done before, can serve as liaison to the MDC contracts. This is not new. I actually requested to have this on the agenda because I wanted to be transparent and want other commissioners to know that my role would be as a liaison to the commission for this new position, which is going to be a whole new deputy county manager position, and actually, county manager welcomed me, said I didn't even need to bring it for a vote, that she would welcome me onto talking and being a part of this new DCM position. So no, your, to your question, I have not to this point because I wanted to go through this process for transparency, have not to this point been involved at all in the job description or anything to do with the DCM.
So Madam Chair, there is no written language here that says that she can allow to bypass what our rules are. There's, there's nothing written here that the county manager can, can again not follow the, the rules that we all abide by and live by. So even if she says, yeah, go ahead, she doesn't have the power to do that. That would actually have to be through us before that even went and took place moving forward. So if you have been involved in any aspect of this to this point, this, it was definitely before this resolution, and even after this resolution, I am going to legally challenge that we do not do that. Because the next thing we're going to be doing, like I said, is we're going to be going into other departments that we're interested in and saying, I want to be a part of and write what the position should be and what it looks like, and then I want to be sitting in the room when you hire and fire people. That is, again, not our job. We should not do that, and if the county manager allowed that, then I also believe she has been and went against this code that we govern by. That particular piece is definitely not in this. I have been studying it for weeks now. It's not in there. I could tell you that. And if you're going to compare it to other people serving on other things, you know, I know that they compared it to maybe people sitting on the committee for MDC or sitting on the committee for us moving from one building to another building, and I'm going to say this publicly. That has nothing to do with hiring a position that is worth a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That is not part of a hiring and firing process. That was done as, as support for things that are already taking place. I am begging this commission not to support this because it does not look good. It smells.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada. Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things that I wanted to address here from, from my colleague. There is no concurrence required or allowed on this, so the commission does not get a vote on whoever is ultimately placed in this position. That is, and regardless of what we do with this tonight, remains a decision that is delegated by this commission to the county manager. So even if this position is brought for a quote-unquote concurrent vote, that vote is non-binding. There are no positions that this commission directly appoints or approves or advising consent. That does not apply except for those commission, positions that the commissioner mentioned, including county manager and the county attorney, and not the fire chief anymore. Actually, that would be the old charter that was recently amended by the voters. I'd also want to say that I think there's some conjecture going on here with regards to, some, some words were thrown around that ex-county commissioners were involved in this. I'm really not sure what that's alluding to, but I, I think that that is conjecture at pure, at, at best. And so I, I want to dispute that. I, I just, that has never come up in my mind. I've, I've never heard anything about that, and I, I think that that's a bit interesting. Also, to, to the point that the commissioner made last on the, the other boards that commissioners have been appointed to in the past, the, the building here, the move to the building was referenced, and the jail, and I think those are really interesting references. The, the statement was made that this is a hundred and sixty thousand dollar a year position. Absolutely. I mean, that's, that's my understanding of it, and somewhere in that range. This building we're sitting in here is a seventy million dollar building, so that's quite a bit more than a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. The jail, which commissioners were, have been, and in the past have been invited to sit on the committee that considers that contract, that interviews applicants for that contract, my knowledge is, is that contract is about a seventeen million dollar a year contract that has been awarded to, you know, private providers over the years, somewhere in that range. So those are, those are pretty substantial items in our, in our budget and in our purview that, that the commission has been invited and, and has given its input in the past through individual members, and, and my understanding of this resolution as it's drafted is this appoints or delegates some of the commission's authority to a liaison because through the ordinance that we have, that was referenced here, the Code of Conduct, AKA in this section, the, the non-interference ordinance, that the commission may delegate some of its authorities as a body to an individual through a resolution, through a vehicle like this. So my last request or point here would be, I, I would like our, our county attorney or some of our county legal staff to weigh in on what this means and where this resolution is, is coming from in relation to the Code of Conduct and the non-interference ordinance.
Thank you, County Attorney.
Yeah, I can do that. Thank you. I believe, and Commissioner Casada did a good job of reading the code. Has it provides this, and I think he acknowledged that the next sentence from where he read for says if you would appoint a liaison to a job description portion is specifically provided for in that code. Sometimes it's referred to as interference ordinance, and it says if you would like to have this occur, you would bring it purposely before the board for board approval of it. So that's what this is in the state, the quote statute provision cited in the paperwork that brought this before us. And then the other small amount of change is that there was amendments to the urban county charter, and one of them was to now require concurrence on the DCMs, on the deputy county managers, and taking away the concurrence from the positions that would have been director positions. So the manager had made, and this was last year, and it was voted on in November, to a suggestion that we bring in the deputy county managers for concurrence and then take out the fire chief and the warden, now called the warden, although we did the warden because it was in between the two changes become effective. So, so there is provision. I can read the specific language if you'd like me to.
Thank you.
I'll read, no county commissioner, and this is subsection B of section two dash one thirty, Standards of Conduct. And if you go to B and you read, Commissioner Casada quoted it exactly appropriately, improper influence, and then you go to the bottom of that provision, it says, "No county commissioner shall make, participate in making or in any way attempt to use his or her position to influence any hiring decision or other decision regarding employment for any county employee except for appointees of the county commissioners, the county manager, the county attorney, and the fire chief. It shall be considered improper influence for commissioner to participate in the creation of a job description for any county position unless he or she is specifically appointed to do so by the Board of County Commissioners through a resolution presented at a public meeting of the board." That's the, the next, so that, that says you don't do it unless you bring it before the board with a resolution. And that's, that's currently what we're doing at this point.
So Madam Chair, could I ask the attorney a question?
Yes.
So could I challenge that, though? Could I challenge that legally? Is that legal, that you can use a resolution that is a wish to overpower an ordinance, which is law, right? And I, and I, I'm asking you here publicly, if you can't represent me, can you get me a lawyer that could represent me so I can sue this particular amendment? Because I think we should never go down this road. It's like saying, oh, well, we've done it before. It's okay. You know, it's all right. We're not, because that's what you said. You did it through the building, the building thing and the MDC thing, and neither one of those, we should have really been involved in, in my opinion. I wasn't. I didn't personally do that because based on my transparency, my ethics, that is not my job. That is not my purview. This looks like it is trying to be, and I'm not saying that it is. I mentioned those names earlier, Commissioner, because if that what ends up happening, it just looks bad. Even if they're the most qualified person for the job, it could come back looking like it was manipulated through this. You don't want to ever put your thumb on the scale, using your power at any point. That is not your job. That is not your position. And no, I don't care what resolution you bring forward, you should not be able to use a resolution to deter or, or change a ordinance. It should not happen. One's a wish list. One is a law. And so I think that I should, right, look at that and challenge that legally.
Yes, sir. So what we'll do, I'll visit with you tomorrow or at your next convenience. We'll seek additional counsel to do an, an additional analysis of it pursuant to the code, and you have the opportunity to meet with him, sir, and I'll make sure we get that put forward. I can't really talk about a lawsuit specifically.
Yeah.
But, and we, we've helped you. We have this available for all electeds, that if you want to have additional opinions, we can make that work. And I'm happy to work with you, sir, and you've always been very fair about making that work out for us.
Okay. Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson. Oh, yes, Commissioner Benson and Chair Baca.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this question's for you. The, and there, it's a tricky situation. If, if one of us are involved in a hiring decision, it, we, we've got the ultimate voice. The county manager is our direct hire, so we've got authority over, over her. So that's, that's my concern in terms of optics. So I would caution you against it. If it's, if we end up hiring somebody who's not a good fit, which we've done before, then who, who would be held responsible for that? That, that's my, that's my concern. The that's what we've hired the county manager for. So my, my question to you is, why do you want to be the liaison? So my question to you is, why do you want to be the liaison?
Yeah, I, so I think, as you all know, I am, I think I've said before, right, I'm a child of an opioid user. I have lived my entire life in proximity, and I've also, that's been part of my career. I've been a case manager, and I often said that it's the reason why I ran, because the voters voted in large masses to approve a tax on themselves, because they believe that alternatives to incarceration for folks that are using substances, substances is a necessary thing, right? So it's why I ran, and it's basically the most primary thing I care about. So hard on sleeve, I'm not trying to take over the county manager's, and my conversation with her was the same, to say, "I just want to be there as somebody whose work this field can give input around values, can outreach to networks of folks when needed to think about what this position can look like for the future of our county. We're in a crisis, and this is not to..." I think the county has done incredible things with our behavioral health dollars, and we need to do a lot more to meet the need that is currently in our streets. And so that's what, it's not to oversee or actually pick the person. I don't actually plan to vote on the actual person, but I do want to be in conversation with the county manager, with the firm. We also have hired a firm to do this, and only recently did this position go public, which, again, for me, the public being aware, this new position, the public being the voters that bring us these dollars, and I want to be ambassador to that. And so I just wanted to bring that forward with all transparency to you all as a commission, and commit that I will communicate with you all, as a liaison should, to really holding this position to our highest standards, and hopefully helping the county move forward with some direction around behavioral health that I believe is needed. So that's why.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Chair Baca.
Yes, thank you. I very much appreciate this conversation, and that is exactly why our county attorney has said we brought it forward in a resolution, so that this discussion could happen in the public realm. I do feel that it's important for us to have conversations and input with our very strong, we have a very strong county manager, and you've heard that she supports the idea of working with Commissioner Barboa in helping to sort this out. This is a very important position, as we all know. Our Behavioral Health Initiative and our working group is a very similar thing. We identified a working group, we have been allowed to attend those working group meetings. We haven't participated or swayed the decision-making by that working group, but it has been very helpful for us all to elevate the discussion about behavioral health, our Behavioral Health Initiative, the structure of the organization itself, and one of the most important things about that is elevating the leadership to a deputy county manager. So I will vote to support this as a liaison. I think Commissioner, Vice Chair Barboa will do an excellent job, and I believe in her ethics and value system to make this a good working discussion with our strong county manager. So I would like to call for the vote.
Thank you, I second that.
Madam Chair, could I make a small floor amendment here? I passed this around here and neglected to make that extra copy for myself. And I'm going to change the floor amendment just slightly, for those of you that have it in front of you. I really just like to add this first section that says, "Is appointed as a behavioral health leadership liaison", so I'll read the whole thing. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, governing body, Burnley County, the Burnley County Commissioner Adrian Barboa is appointed as, this is the new part, "as a behavioral health leadership", end new part, "liaison to the county manager, including but not limited to participating in the creation of a job description for a deputy county manager." And I make a motion for the amendment.
I'll second that.
Thank you, that is a friendly amendment.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Casada?
Again, you're allowing a commissioner to figure out the job description. I think we're all passionate about this work. I don't think anybody that I know of has not been affected by opiate use in their families. I think we all want to make sure that this is done correctly and right, and I think we've been on that path for the last seven years without doing any of this, without being involved in the job description and the hiring of a deputy county manager. We have not ever done that. And I believe, again, this sets a bad precedence. I think we all know, and the emergency that we have here. But we have to have faith in our staff, in our county manager, and our processes. I think when we start crossing the line, where does it stop? It starts here, and where does it stop? And that's my concern. I know Commissioner Barboa is passionate about this. I know she's worked towards this, right? We know that. But we also know that we've been doing a really incredible job. Is there always room for improvement? Of course there is. Behavioral health, there is no magic wand. There is, because if we had, we would have spent the money to buy it. It's just as complex as education. It's a case-by-case, it's a person-by-person solution as we move forward. There is nobody that we're going to be able to do better than what we've been doing moving forward. I believe that, and I think it's best that we let the county and the county manager do her job, and then we will address it as it comes to us within our purview. Again, I don't believe job description and hiring of is, sets a very bad precedent. Just before, they said they weren't going to do any of this, and now in the amendment, it says, right in the amendment, it says, "Job description and hiring of".
Madam Chair?
That is bad precedent.
Yes, Commissioner Olivas?
I did not move the portion on hiring for the record. My amendment is to add only the first section saying, stating, "As a behavioral health leadership liaison", so naming the liaison as a behavioral health liaison.
But it says as, to participating in the job description and hiring of this deputy county manager in your amendment.
I did not move the hiring of section.
He didn't include that in his amendment.
That's not in my amendment.
Okay, so, but you were, until I brought this up, and then you yellow-lined it out, taking it out, because you knew that somehow this isn't 100% right.
I changed my mind. I, Madam Chair, I'd call a question.
Thank you. And I just, Madam Clerk, please call there.
Vice Chair Barboa?
Amendment.
Yes, to the amendment. Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
No.
Commissioner Benson?
So the word "hiring of" has been removed?
Correct.
Okay, aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Chair Baca?
Yes.
So called.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Benson?
I'd like to amend it as well. Just for clarity, this is a big position. I think you are qualified to be a behavioral health leadership liaison. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want you to get into, you know, a quagmire. This is such a complicated position, such a complicated problem. I'd like there to be, as liaison, I'd like to add language where the county, the full county commission is involved in this somehow. I don't think it should be one person on the commission for a deputy-level position. And part of that is for your benefit. So I'm not sure exactly, I didn't have time to write anything out, but I'd like to add language that, and maybe county attorney, you could help me, that says, the actual job description is reviewed by the county commission before moving forward.
The job description, just for point of clarity, the job description is already posted. I have not had any involvement in changing that or doing anything with that. So the job description is currently posted, and I don't know. So this is for me to work closely with both the firm we've hired and the county manager, like I said, mostly around values. You know, I've been in meetings where doctors that we pay a lot of money to have said public, that harm reduction is controversial. To me, harm reduction is something that's been going on and proven evidence-based since the 70s, and should be foundational to the work we do, and could mean a lot for the numbers of people we see on our streets. So, yeah, I think that's what I plan to do, is bring some of those values around harm reduction. But, yeah, the job description is already posted on our county website, and I believe they're even moving into, they've started some rounds of interviews.
Thank you for that clarity. Then what would this liaison role be for? Because it says participating in the creation of a job description.
Yeah, that is part of, as I understand, when I met with counsel, with legal counsel and the county manager, right, that I expressed what I wanted to do, exactly that. I want to bring values, I want to have conversations, and be able to be a liaison to the other commissioners and the public, in our public forum, to how this is moving forward. This is the language to get us there.
So then, while you're meeting...
But I welcome if other commissioners want to volunteer and be, I think we should all be involved. But, yeah, if that's what you're proposing, that another commissioner be involved, or more, I do not oppose that at all.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm a little confused on this new role and the amendment. Is it to update the job description, or more to select the actual candidate?
I understand to be involved in the process and work with the county manager around, like I said, values as a liaison to the commission. If you all have things you want me to bring, I plan to meet with the county manager more often, have discussions around this, meet with the hiring firm, and so if you all would like me to bring stuff to them forward, I want to be that as well.
In the selection of the candidate?
No, in this process that is already underway.
In the process of what? Selecting a candidate?
In the process of hiring of our new DCM, new deputy county manager of behavioral health. So it's not to vote on, like have a final vote on that, it's to be officially closer to the county manager, the hiring form, and folks involved in the process, hopefully to give input, my suggestions around values, and some of the core necessities to have our success with this new appoint, this new position.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to interject and ask if an amendment was being made, you know, I'd like to move the conversation along here a little bit and see if there was a suggestion for an amendment. I think it's pretty clear, I think in most of our minds, what the title liaison means, right? It does not mean a formal role, a voting member, a manager, a director. It means a conduit, a representative, somebody that's observing, listening, providing feedback. It's not as a decision-maker. I think that's mostly what a liaison means across the board in any role, it's somebody in that. So anyway, I would like to suggest if an amendment was being offered, that we consider it.
Thank you. It's not clear to me what liaison is. Is the liaison responsible for helping select the position? Commissioner Olivas, maybe you can help me clarify. That's all I need to know. What does liaison mean?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, I think it says pretty clearly, "The liaison to the county manager, including but not limited to participating in the creation of a job description for a deputy county manager",
Which has already been created.
"...in behavioral health.
The job descriptions already been created?
Yeah, but not limited to, is that?
But not limited to?
And I believe job descriptions change from time to time, and as we look at this, and we look at the behavioral health landscape, and the hiring applicant pool, and all the things that go into filling a position, any position, we know that job descriptions change. You know, it's not as though it's created once and that's it.
Okay. So that's the...
So I think this just gives the flexibility to allow somebody that I think brings the best of what we've got on this commission, representing our community, a core part of our community, to the table, to participate in advising, in listening, in giving feedback on this process and this new individual position that's critical to our whole behavioral health landscape, and that's the whole reason why this commission pushed for that creation of that position, was in recognition of how important this is, and I think it's also important that we follow through, and using the authorities that are given to this commission through our Code of Conduct, non-interference ordinance, that allows the appointment of a liaison. That is what this does, this exercises that power that the law has given this commission.
Okay, thank you. So Madam Chair, I think that is the language that causes concern, that it's including but not limited to participating in the creation of the job description. So it could include hiring the actual person. I'm not saying that you would do that, but it could. Would you have the authority to do that?
I don't think that the word liaison gives authority. I think, in my, and in my view, and I appreciate Commissioner Olivas's explanation of liaison, and that has been my view, that I am a liaison to you, all the commissioners, and the public through our public forum, as to how the process is moving forward, and how we have a quality new deputy county manager, but not for making decisions or hiring, for sure.
Okay. Then, I would like to just amend this to say, but not to hire the position. Other than that, I think you're the great, the best person for a behavioral health leadership liaison, and you could probably pick the best person, too, honestly. I just don't think it's our role to do that, and that's my only concern for you. I wouldn't want that position, if it doesn't go well, for myself as well, if we hire somebody and it's not the right fit, which has happened before. And so I'd like to make that amendment.
Madam Chair, could I ask the lawyer a question?
Yes.
So on this amendment, what do you read, "Not limited to"? How do you interpret that?
That's a, I see that question, and I hear the amendment, and I think that's where the language should go. Let me think out loud here. Liaison, the county manager, including but not limited to participating in job creation, and then you could just add a sentence says, nothing herein gives the liaison the power to do the actual choice of the applicant.
So Madam Chair, Rocky's in the room. I don't know if Rocky has an opinion on some of this language. He's our expert in the Code of Conduct here for Burnley County, and if I could bring him up and ask his opinion on some of this language.
Sure, welcome, Rocky.
Maybe we can clarify some of this stuff, because the way I read "not limited to" is really opening the door to something else.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, thank you. So I was looking over the rules, and I think there are just some things to consider when making this decision, if I may. And in respect to County Attorney Martinez, I wanted to point just to commissioner interference, and I'm going to read number one. And then we can define some of these words, or you can interpret some of these words, if you'd like.
Commissioner Casada has read that out loud, so I don't know.
Yeah, so I think the issue here is to interfere in any way with the performance of an employee under the jurisdiction. Performance can be the routine of that particular employee, which could include the job description if we're going to talk about job duties. So just something to think about as well. And under number four, "The county commission shall deal with the employees under the jurisdiction of the county manager solely through the county manager, except for", of the county manager solely through the county manager except for, and the only exception here may be in connection with the hiring process of the county manager, county attorney or fire chief. I, you know, so if you have any other input on hiring or employment for other positions outside of that particular definition, we might have to consider that as well. So, I mean, those are, to me are the relevant sections to be considered. I'm not going to make a decision on this particular issue. I would like to consult with County Attorney Martinez and maybe go over some of these definitions. Uh, there were some other sections he cited, which I haven't reviewed. So just wanted to provide that input as far as, um, looking into those, these definitions and considering what, what, what you're going to do in your performance of liaison, right? Is it to-
So, so Rocky, basically you're saying you need more time to even know what we're doing is correct.
I, I think we would, we would have to consult and, um, you know, interpret these particular clauses as a whole to determine whether it's appropriate to engage in the creation of a job description. Um, because what does performance mean, right? If, is there any influence to that position based on their performance, which could include a job description? So we, we would just have to look into this a little bit more.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Chair Baca.
I, I believe that, um, there is a, a motion on the floor that was beginning to be formatted and Commissioner Benson, I wonder if, um, if we could, um, go to what the county attorney, um, suggested and make your amendment to say something to the effect of, you know, this is a liaison and it is in no way going to take the power from the county manager for hiring this position. Or some kind of language that says that she, you know, it's not going to be a vote. The county manager retains the ability to recommend the hire of this deputy county manager. And Ken, maybe you can, uh, put it into better legalese, but it's a, it seems to me that that would be a simple way of alleviating your concern, Commissioner Benson. If you said she, she's not going to play the role of overruling our county manager or, or, um, voting against it, or, you know, she's going to help with liaison and discussion and the county manager retains that role of hire.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair and, uh, Madam Chair Baca. Uh, thank you. That's basically in a nutshell. Um, and I trust, I trust, uh, Madam Chair Barbois', uh, heart in this. Uh, I just want to make sure that it's clean and we're not overstepping our authority. So yeah, you basically summed it up and so, um, County Attorney, can you word that amendment? And then, yeah, I would like to make a motion to add that amendment. So it's not to overstep the hiring authority of the county manager.
I would second that amendment.
Let me take a stab at it and I'll work with Juliana and make sure we put it correctly.
So Madam Chair, I'd like to discuss that amendment.
I believe that, um, Ken is about to propose some language.
So the language would be not to include any hiring decision other than those authorized by the, or by the, uh, charter. Because there is a charter provision for concurrence, which is different from this final choice, right? You don't choose, you just concur. So there's the concurrence opportunity that still exists and it was a recent change. So, uh, not to include any hiring decision other than those authorized by the charter. Or other than that authorized by the charter, I guess is what I'd say.
That is a friendly amendment, um, discussion.
Yeah, I, I, I like to discuss that just because, um, you could say that, you know, you're not influencing somebody that you actually have power over, um, when you have the votes to fire that person. And if they don't really take your suggestion or take your, your, you know, i- i- it could influence a dis, that's why the ethics stuff is in place, commissioners. That's why it's there. You're the boss of somebody that you, that you can either like what they do or not like what they do in the next meeting. You could get the three votes and fire that person. And so just based on that, having that kind of power in the room is wrong. You can't be a part of that. You shouldn't be a part of, no matter how passionate you are, you need to keep yourself clean of that, right? You could still work with staff as they hire people and work with the people you hired to implement some of the things that you think are important for the behavioral health and the success of the behavioral health initiative and the tax dollars that we put towards the behavioral health. We still have a say so. But if you're sitting in the room and I tell you, um, I want you to do this, this, this and this, and you don't. I, and I'm not saying she would do that. I'm just saying that could happen. You have to keep yourself clear of that because you are this person's boss. This is the one, one of the two people you hire and fire. And if they don't listen to you, what happens? What could happen, Commissioner? That's why I cannot support this. I don't believe we should be going down this road. This opens the door to other things down the road where you could just put out a resolution and say, hey, I want to sit in, in the Capitol and how they spend the money on roads because, you know, I may not like this other commissioner. And I'm going to, and, and, and I'm not saying any commissioner up here would do that. I'm just trying to keep us clean moving into the future and how this commission does business. Because if we start this precedent, if we start using these loopholes just to do one, and, and it could be a good thing, I agree with you. There's probably no one better up here to do that job, to, to, to give advice. That doesn't stop her from giving advice. That doesn't stop her for, from participating in the whole initiative as we go forward to whomever we hire. They still have to, they still have to answer to what she wants through the lens of the county manager. That still takes place. To think that we don't have any say so doesn't make any sense. So even with that amendment, Commissioner, I cannot support us going down this road.
Madam Chair, can I respond?
Yes.
So I hear Commissioner Casada, your position. And it's true, we do have that authority, each of us does. But this would be a, this would be a, uh, this would be a more transparent way to, to make sure everybody understands, uh, Commissioner Barbois' role. Ultimately, you could pull county manager aside and say, I wouldn't do that if I were you. And, you know, that, you still have that authority. So it's, it's an ethical, um, responsibility that we all have no matter what. Um, the, the one thing though that, uh, the ethics, uh, expert did say though, and county ma, or county attorney, can you clarify that? Is that the, even the creation of a job description is, is in question in terms of our influence? It sounded like that's what he said. Because if, I don't want to mess with-
He tied it to performance, which I don't know how we're naming that as performance when it's not even a position that currently exists.
Right, right. So in terms of the ethical, I mean, it's a sticky situation. I wouldn't do, I wouldn't do this if I were you. Um, I-
Fire me.
Yeah. Yeah. If I, you're passionate about it and I, I applaud you for that. I think you, if this was a, if this is a legitimate role that, that would not be disputed, I think you're the perfect person for it. Yeah. I just don't know that if, if it would be disputed or could come back to bite us, I don't think we should, we should push this forward.
Commissioner Olivas.
Madam Chair, um, I, I would like to call the question.
Thank you. Second, um, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Do we, is it on?
The amendment.
On the amendment?
On the amendment.
And then I have kind of the language because I just want to articulate it to the commissioner.
Oh, great.
Make sure, and I shared it with Juliana. Um, and you would just add but not to include any hiring decision unless authorized by the county charter. Because it's, I don't want to preclude the process of concurrence, which is not really a direct hiring decision. But that would clarify, I think, what you're asking for. So that would be the amendment, uh, Commissioner Benson, if I had that correctly.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the debate and, um, I ask for, um, my colleagues' vote in support for this and I, um, intend to move forward with all respect for the county manager, our county processes and with integrity for the behavioral health feature of our county. So I ask for your vote. County manager, please call the roll. I mean, County Clerk, sorry.
Madam Chair, is this vote for the-
The amendment.
Amendment?
Amendment.
Okay, vote for the amendment. Uh, Vice Chair Barbois.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
No.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Now, there is a motion on the floor that's been seconded and now amended. I move to approve the resolution as amended. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can we get, uh, final, uh, position from County Attorney on the ethical question that's been brought up by the, I'm sorry, Mr. Rocky? I didn't catch your last name.
Gutierrez, I believe.
Gutierrez, thank you. And thank you for speaking.
I appreciate Mr. Gutierrez's, um, analysis of it. And, um, there is a, a way to go through, uh, the ethics to look at these issues. Uh, in, this is a little hard to understand just the way the rule is written because the general rule is you shall not interfere, which take part in any employment decisions. And then the exception is you can, if you bring it, and I'm not saying interfere, but you can participate in the, this creation, uh, if you bring it to the board for a vote. So I think, uh, I remember the presentation of this ordinance because I helped present it to the board back in, I don't know, 2015, 2016. And the issue was that, uh, any activity by the board should be blessed by the whole board, not by an individual member. So what it's trying to prevent is one board member going, oh, I want to be, take part in this. The provision was no, you'd have to go to your whole board and ask for them to be allowed to do that. So it's kind of transparent. So it is ironically a rule, says, no, you don't do it. Here's the exception, this is how you do it. You go to the whole board and ask for permission to do it. And that, I think, answers kind of the ethical question.
Okay.
I do understand Mr. Commissioner Casada's concerns though, because as this, this is the exception to the general rule, which says you shouldn't interfere in employment decisions. This is the exception. There's other exceptions further on down. So you could always go and say, I have some concerns about the county attorney. I have some concerns about a, a deputy county manager. So you can raise your concerns with the county manager. She has the ultimate authority, but you're allowed to do those type of things. Not deciding hiring and firing for, for positions. Of course, county manager, county attorney, you can. But on those other lower positions, you can raise your concerns, which can be done ethically. But that's not direct hiring and firing. You could just say, I, I want somebody that's responsive, you know, to, to my needs, my needs of my constituents. I hope I'm answering your question, but the general rule is not to do it. The exception is if you do it, this is how you do it.
So this is a proper way to do this? And then it's not ethically, uh, questioned according to our ordinances?
I believe that it's doing it pursuant to the code as it is currently written. And I honestly believe your amendment is clarifying that even further.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Chair Baca.
I, I would agree with that. I think that the amendment is a good one. And I think that, um, it clearly states that this in no way takes away the authority from our county manager for this hire. It simply places actually a more, um, more importance and more discussion between the board and the county manager as we have been doing, as has been said by the county manager. So this is a, this is a very important thing to move forward. Um, and, uh, we really want the best pick, um, with, with what the county manager is doing with her leadership, doing a national search. And so I would like to call for the vote as well.
Thank you. Um, County Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Barbois.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
No.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Aye.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Thank you, so moved. Thank you for your support and I promise to move with integrity. Um, thank you. Moving on to item number 10A. Again, our awesome county assessor, Damian Lada, to present 2023 Property Valuation Maintenance Program Plan.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, thank you so much, um, for, um, allowing me to present, uh, our annual evaluation maintenance plan and budget. The Office of the County Assessor is, uh, ready and willing to work with the property owners to ensure that we build safer streets, stronger schools and a sustainable economy that works for all. Uh, the staff at the county assessor's office is ready, willing and able to shape a better tomorrow together with our community partners. I will sort of highlight some of the program plans. It, it has been submitted and, and copies are available, um, for you, uh, if you wish, additional copies. Some of the highlights that we are taking, some of the bold initiatives, uh, in this plan in the coming years for the administration is the reassessment of commercial values to their current and correct valuations. The reclassification and reassessment of short-term rentals and, most importantly, a reinspection plan of all properties that will be conducted within a four-year cycle. We anticipate that in the coming year, we will process and review about 14,000 residential and 1,500 non-residential building permits. That we will review and process approximately combined 20,000 residential and non-residential property transfers or change of ownership that will come, uh, including about 17,000 residential properties that have to be brought up to current and correct per a change of ownership in the 3% cap. And we will review about approximately 1,500 business licenses, including 1,700, I'm sorry, 700 building, uh, license, short-term rental licenses and permits to review that. Um, a- as was alluded earlier, um, Madam Chair, uh, I have also implemented a review in coordination with both the city and counties, building and zoning enforcement for the review of all nuisance properties in the county. That was approximately 1,300 properties. Many of those properties have been rehabilitated. Property owners have moved forward with those and those properties are being, uh, assessed the same as they have always done. There were just under about 200, um, properties that were still, uh, either abandoned, boarded up, um, tagged by the city or the county, um, because nobody lives those. State law requires that residential property have a use of habitation, human habitation that is permanent. Um, these properties that are boarded up and nuisance do not qualify for that because there is nobody living in those properties. We have, um, reassessed those properties as non-residential property and valued them at their highest and best use. Um, we anticipate that the property owners, um, many of them are out of state, uh, investment firms, uh, limited liability companies to either sell that property so that they can be rehabilitated by a new owner or bring them up themselves. The aim of this initiative is to ensure that we reduce the number of nuisance properties and substandard properties and increase the amount of affordable housing market. Um, we will continue to take these bold initiatives. Um, a- as was again alluded a little bit earlier, the county assessor's office still has a 30% vacancy rate. Um, we are asking, um, for the $4 million general fund appropriation to help pay for salaries. Um, the revaluation fund, um, at this year, which had remained stagnant for about eight years, um, I'm asking that you approve, uh, an equal increase, well, just over, uh, an 11.5% increase in the revaluation fund to help with the initiatives that we talked about, uh, to invest in our labor force and that they are compensated correctly, as well as that we provide the technology necessary to provide effective and efficient valuations throughout Burnaleo County. Um, and with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Assessor Lada. Any comments from commissioners?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, uh, Mr. Assessor, thank you so much. As you know, a lot of those properties are probably mine and, uh, perhaps Commissioner Barbois', uh, district, um, because that's where we find people falling on hard times and, and, and a lot of these properties are historic. They come from families, from many generations and- And the kids move out and they get masters degrees and move to Texas or Arizona or Colorado. That's a comment from us begging the DACA students to stay in New Mexico. And those properties, they fall, right? And there's other problems that I have in my district that I think that eventually you'll be able to address, like the Pajarito Mesa, where we have landowners that don't even live in New Mexico. They live in California and New York, and they don't really care what's happening with those properties. Or I don't know if they use them as tax write-offs or what, right? So eventually, you know, we want everybody to pay their fair share. And definitely, we want to look at those properties because, you know, me and you, we had a really great conversation the other day about affordable housing and how we're in a big affordable housing crunch. And what game plan do we really have, right, to do that and move that forward? You know, we have limited growth. We eventually are going to run out of space. Whether people believe that or not, we're going to run into every reservation at some point. Maybe not in our lifetime, but eventually. So those properties are going to become very important to affordable housing, in my opinion, and proper growth within the community. So this initiative is very welcomed in District 2, and we thank you for your thoughtful work.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, you're absolutely correct. And I look forward to working with you on perhaps presenting a resolution before this committee about other ways that we can provide for affordable care, particularly for our elder communities.
Yeah, we had a long conversation about the elderly and homes and building casitas and having people be able to take care of their parents and sell those homes. And then those homes become affordable housing. So me and you are working on something. I didn't want to let the cat out of the bag, but you did, so that's okay. I think it's a really great plan on how we move forward. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Assessor, for your thorough report and the initiatives that you're planning here. I just want to echo Commissioner Casada's piece that the affordable housing component of what you're doing, I think we don't often think of the tax assessor as, you know, a key role in the affordable housing piece, but we're in such a crunch here that we really have to have everybody on board in all rows going in the same direction. And I think this is part of that effort to make sure that we're using these nuisance properties, these abandoned, dilapidated, or underutilized units, treating them as the resource that they are for affordable housing. So I'm just thankful for your efforts on that and appreciate you bringing this before us.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson, thank you.
Do have a question, Mr. Assessor. The, we've already voted on a budget. So would this be changing the budget we've already voted on?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, so in discussions with Deputy County Commissioner, Deputy County Manager for Finance, we are looking at about a deficit from what was approved of about $76,000 originally. The budget that I presented before the county commission was $4 million, just over $4 million. The budget that was actually approved was less $96,000. And that was due to a position that was reclassified by the prior administration outside of the general fund appropriations. We hope that by July 1st of this year, we will be able to regain some positions that were lost due to a reduction in force by the previous, previous assessor. And when that position comes back, we hope to have that money available, which is approximately about $76,000. And so that is what we're asking to ensure that we get back sort of that, not quite $96,000 that I had presented before the county commission, but that was ultimately reduced by about $96,000. And working with the county commission, I hope we have that money available by July 1st of this year, the fiscal year coming forward.
Okay, so is this, thank you, Mr. Assessor. So is this a vote to amend the budget that we've already approved?
So Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, no, it is not a vote to amend the budget that you already have. It is a vote to approve a request for this plan. So if it is available come the new fiscal year, then you're asking that we continue to work together to ensure that that money comes back in the new fiscal year, but not to change the current authorized budget.
Okay. And if it's not available?
Then I will have to find other monies to hire the people that we have. We, as I mentioned, Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, the reduction in force that we have, the vacancy rate of about 36%, will have salary savings well above what we will use. It is highly, while I do not like to admit this, it is highly unlikely that I will be able to hire 50 new people within the fiscal year. So we will have salary savings from that time. Nonetheless, the, so if you look at page 23, the FY22 actuals of what is actually spent versus what was, the FY23 approved are very big differences. Nonetheless, I would ask the commission that you approve that funding so that we can work towards those goals, even though the actual budget expenditures will probably be much less. If you compare the, just the general fund expenditures that were approved for FY23, we're looking at $3.6 million. The actuals that were expended in FY22 is $2.9 million, even though those approvals for FY22 were closer to $3 million, actually like $3.8 million, if I remember correctly. And the FY23 actuals will also come in under the $3.6 million.
Okay, thank you.
So, short answer is, no, you will not be voting to amend the approved budget, but you will be voting to approve the request.
And the request will not impact our budget?
No, sir.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you. Madam, or? Adam Shirley, Deputy County Manager Reagan, can you clarify that? Mr. Assessor's doing a really good job. I'm just, I think tonight we're going into some kind of murky area in multiple ways. I just want to make sure I'm clear on the vote that we're about to do. This will not affect our prior vote. Correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, no, this will not. What I've been talking to Assessor Lada about is looking at when we get further in the year, seeing, reassessing his position in terms of what he needs. He's short that amount of money. So based on all the things that he said, so we'll take a look at that. But we are not amending, and this request should not be amending the budget that you already approved back in April, which is well on its way to being submitted to the DFA. But I have been working closely with him to understand what his needs are and working with HR and other folks alongside with him and the county manager.
Great, okay. The program sounds great. So I just want to make sure we're following protocol. Thank you. Thank you, Deputy County Manager.
Thank you, Assessor. I also appreciated the briefing on this, and I'm really thankful for your bold leadership and vision forward, and also your bold tie. Very nice. I believe I move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Chair Baca.
I believe she is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to item 9C, oh, whoops, 10B, Office of Criminal Justice and Behavioral Health Initiatives, Metropolitan Detention Center, Buprenorphine Program. Thank you. We have Senior Manager Pam Acosta and a team to present.
Several people with me. Good evening, good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the board. Pam Acosta, the Senior Manager for the Behavioral Health Initiative. And I bring before you a request which seeks 580,000 in one-time, non-recurring funds to support the continuation of the buprenorphine medication assisted treatment program at the Metropolitan Detention Center. In December of 2020, the Metropolitan Detention Center, in partnership with the Behavioral Health Initiative, entered a contract with Recovery Services of New Mexico and piloted the buprenorphine, also known as the Boxone Medication Assisted Treatment Program within the jail. The program, which includes induction and maintenance, has grown from 22 patients to 120 maintenance patients and 30 induction patients monthly. This number continues to grow as Burnaleo County battles the opioid epidemic. Not realizing the growth, demand, and success of this pilot program, the one-time Behavioral Health Initiative capital and startup funding will be depleted prior to the contract expiration in December of 2023. The Behavioral Health Initiative, in partnership with MDC, is requesting to utilize opioid settlement award funding to supplement the pilot program until December 2023. According to the final distributor settlement agreement, Exhibit E, the buprenorphine program at MDC qualifies as an opioid remediation use and falls under Schedule A corrobatement strategies as one, a medication assisted treatment, and two, treatment for the incarcerated population. If approved, the funds will be used to meet and expand the current number of individuals being served each month, which would be 50 inductions and 150 individuals for maintenance. Discontinuing the program will disrupt treatment for those already engaged in services, and the county is fully committed to ensuring that there is no lapse in services now and beyond 2023. The request was presented to our subject matter experts, the Addiction Treatment Advisory Board, who unanimously recommended the proposal move forward to the Burnaleo County Commission for final consideration. BHI has also worked very closely with Madam County Manager Morgas Baca, the Metropolitan Detention Center, and the Deputy County Manager Lisa Sidiou White to support the continuation and success of this program. The motion before you is to authorize expenditures exceeding the county manager's signature authority limit of $200,000 pursuant to Administrative Resolution 2018-49 with Recovery Services of New Mexico to support the continuation of the buprenorphine medication assisted treatment at the Metropolitan Detention Center. And it also, this motion to authorize the county manager to execute agreements and subsequent agreements related to the buprenorphine medicated assisted treatment program at MDC. If it will please the commission, I'm accompanied by Lorena Blanco, who is the interim regional director of operations for recovery services, just started in May this month. And Amber Salazar, our Behavioral Health Initiative Operations Manager, who's managing the contract with Recovery Services, who are also available to take questions or provide information. Otherwise, we await your final disposition.
Thank you, Manager Acosta. Comments from the?
Madam Chair, yeah, I just have a few questions. Since, you know, this isn't reoccurring dollars, it's, you know, it's always tough, right? But the money that we're allocating tonight, how long do you think that would sustain this program?
Commissioner Casada, Madam Chair, we anticipate that if approved, this funding would get us to December. And after that, we had the foresight to start planning in January, and we budgeted $3 million from the BHI to go towards the sustainment of this program on long term.
Okay, because, you know, I know it's going to be some heartburn about spending money, one-time money without reoccurring. But realistically, there's no guarantee that any of the money we allocate and whatever programs we decide this money's going to go to is going to be for, that's not going to later on require reoccurring dollars. But I'm glad that you have a plan in place. I think what this does is gives us a little more time to kind of figure out some reoccurring money, just so the public knows and realizes that this was originally funded through the state, which now is no longer assisting us with this. So again, another great idea, which we call the unfunded mandate, putting a good idea forward but not putting the dollars to sustain it behind it. And here we find ourselves finding, having to find a way to sustain a very extremely important program that we provide and service that we provide at MDC. So I'm glad that you've kind of put both eyes on the ball. And, you know, I would definitely support us using the funds to get us there. And so I'll just move for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, in this line of questioning that just happened here, I think something interesting came out. So the estimated cost to operate the program is currently at 1.4 million. And we're backfilling that with this opioid money to get us through this year. And you said that there was $3 million included from the BHI for January forward. Is that recurring money or is that one-time money from BHI?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Olivas, yes, that is recurring funding. And the reason that we requested such a large amount is we were accounting for both programs, the methadone and buprenorphine. But I do need to let the board know that we are continuing conversations with the state and looking at outsourcing any kind of support and funding as we go along. Yes, that would be recurring.
So the $3 million from behavioral health is recurring, and will cover all of our medication assisted treatment at MDC, hopefully for the foreseeable future. And in an ideal world, we get the state on board to help us. But I do have a commitment here that this has been included in our budget beyond this calendar year, and we shouldn't be coming back to this fund for more.
That's correct.
Okay. I mean, I think that, you know, in looking at this and looking at the opioid money as a one-time source of funds, that gives us a tremendous opportunity, but it also comes with tremendous risk because if it's not used in a way that leverages that money, because, you know, in the end, we don't know what the exact amount will be, but it's, you know, it'll be a good chunk of money. And we want to use that money, in my opinion, in a way that is transformative, in a way that outlasts what it should, so that it pays dividends and it's leveraged with state money, federal money. Obviously, this doesn't do that, but this is an important program. And I don't dispute the efficacy of this one bit. This is critical. I was listening to a podcast the other day that mentioned this program specifically and as a model in jails and looked at how the state is not doing this in their facilities. And one of the biggest problems is actually that sometimes people that go from our jail to the state facility are probably put in the worst position of anybody at all because we know that they're not going to be maintained when they move to state care. But they're almost better off being released where at least there's some chance that if we can get them through our Resource Reentry Center and get them with a provider and keep them on this treatment, they have some chance of success. Whereas we know in that prison pipeline that that's not happening. And hopefully, that's changing fast. But I think this really changes my outlook on this, knowing that this is a one, this is truly a one-time request, which at least makes it that much more palatable in the sense that, you know, we have to be thoughtful about this. But, you know, things, this is a really important thing. And I commend your leadership, the leadership of the county manager, and everybody in behavioral health and the warden and folks at the jail that have made this a priority and made it a national model. I was excited when I heard that podcast and got to listen about this program and the transformative effects it can have and the great resources it has. So for that reason, I will support this, and I think this is a good program. And thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Would you like to second Commissioner Casada's?
Oh, I'll second.
Thank you. I do have a couple, I just wanted you to name again. Are you with Albicurky Recovery?
Yes, so my name is Lorena Blanco. I'm the interim regional director of operations for Recovery Services of New Mexico.
Oh, operations, I was.
Yes.
Okay. And great, how long now, because I know it's passed at some point, then it took time to get it set up. How long now have we been offering buprenorphine and medical assisted treatment induction in the jail? Do you know?
Sorry.
Thank you, Amber.
Commissioner, Madam Chair, and members-
Commissioner, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. So my name is Amber Salazar. I'm the operations manager with Behavioral Health Initiative, and I've been managing this contract for the past three years. It is under the capital and startup funding. It began, the contract began in December 2020. It was slow to start. Maintenance began in September 2021. Induction began in May 2022. We are one full year on induction services. And the funding that was allocated for year one, two, and three is projected to deplete in June, which this funding would pick up. But that's how the services have been since it started in December 2020.
Thank you for that clarity, Manager Salazar. And I just wanted to meet you because I wasn't sure. I don't have any further questions. I support this. I did ask to pull it off of the consent agenda, just to the points that had already been said. I think when we pass this, and good to hear a little bit more of the background, but this is a commitment, just like having healthcare services, having corrections officers that are well-trained. Like this is a commitment and essential to how we operate our jail system. So I just want this to be sustainable and not be in the angst where we are scrapping for dollars at the last minute. But I understand that, you know, this is also a fairly new project. We have ramped up services, which I think is an excellent thing. Thank you for sharing that information. And yeah, approve it for this one-time funding and whatever I could do to help sustain the program for the long haul. Thank you. So there's a motion on floor. Any other conversation? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Chair Baca.
Thank you. Thank you. You have a due pass. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to item 11, the announcement of next commission meeting. For all you long-timers here with us, thank you for standing strong. Tuesday, June 6, 2023, zoning meeting at 3:00 PM here at Ken Sanchez Commission Chambers. Hope our chair is back. Tuesday, June 6, 2023, is our next administrative meeting, 5:00 PM here at Ken Sanchez Chambers. There's no other meeting, no other business. This meeting is adjourned.